Good evening. Zoning Board of Appeals, Town New Canaan. Today is February. Let's see, second, fifth, February 5th, I'm three days off, today's February 5th. And zoning board of New Canaan will come to order at 7:00 PM. Slay now works. When we call your case, we ask that each presenter come up to the lectern, identify himself or herself and the property in question. State the request of the board, identify the hardship and the reason for the request. Remember that the hardship cannot be financial in nature and must run with the land and is peculiar to your property. The board will then ask questions of you, after which you will sit down and we will give those present a chance to speak. You will then be given an opportunity to answer any questions or sum up your request. We record the meeting, so everyone must speak into the microphone and state their names. The only microphone up here working like this one. The board will then go into business session, discuss and make a decision. There are five voting members on the board and it takes four affirmative votes to be granted a variance. I'm going to take attendance and I'm going to add something to our agenda.
Okay. Luke Tashin.
Present.
Jessica Cardon.
Present.
Rich Carey too.
Present.
Cynthia Dole.
Present.
Kristy Bonner.
Present.
And Brittany Singer.
Present.
So we're going to amend the agenda to add to appointment of officers.
Just need a motion.
Anyone want to, I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
I.
Everyone in favor? Okay.
Well, it's nice to meet all of you or some of you, but it's nice to meet all of you. Thank you for your service to the town. I really appreciate it. It's an important board that we move now. Thank you all for all you. So I'm going to be running officer elections this evening and if we could start with, there are any nominations for the office of chair?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jessica Cardon. I think she's got the qualifications, the knowledge and demeanor to be chair of the committee.
Do you have any other nominations?
Yep, Rich Carey too. I'd like to nominate Luke.
Alright, so we have two nominations. Any other nominations? Okay, so all those in favor of Jessica Cardon as chair of the zoning board of appeals, please raise your hand.
To be certain, I don't think alternates can vote.
Oh, right, no alternate. So who's, I don't know who the alternate, sorry, I don't have the list in front of me. The two of you are, okay, so Jessica and Cynthia, okay. Oh. Wow, and then, um, for in, uh, Luke, uh, who's voting for Luke? We have Rich and Luke, so we are tied. So does that mean I break the tie?
I believe so.
Okay. Good to have a little heads up, Gary.
Welcome, welcome to.
Well, uh, so Luke is the seated chair currently.
Temporary chair.
Oh, he is.
We haven't had a chair.
Since May.
Since May, yeah, a long time.
I don't have the list of the committee. Hold on, I can go on my phone.
I have the list on my iPad.
Do you?
So we're missing a, uh, like we don't have the this regular number also.
Oh, because I just seated someone.
Yeah, you seated an alternate, but we don't have a regular.
Well, one of the alternates will be moved out once. Okay. Alright, well.
Yeah.
I thought this looked automatic. You can add like an actual. Hold on, boss.
I don't think, I think it'll be fine. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem.
I didn't know we were going to have a exciting. Okay, I'm going to be voting for Luke for chair, so. Three to two, and, um. Well.
This was.
So now we need secretary.
Well, this was a little surprising that we've always been like non-political and we've always voted together on almost every application. But the secretary usually moves up into chair after, and I wouldn't nominate Jessica if she wants to be the secretary.
I politely respectfully decline just with my working professional obligations. I know you have to get things signed. Okay. That might be challenging.
Okay.
So I'd like to nominate Cynthia if we're still willing to.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would second that then.
Okay. Alright, um, do I have any other nominations besides Cynthia for chair?
Me, secretary.
So, sorry, secretary. Alright, already. Um, yes, so any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor of Cynthia Dole as secretary?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Alright.
Well. Outside of Grace Farms, it's the most contentious thing we've done here. Outside of Grace Farms, it's the most contentious thing we've handled.
Much less exciting.
Yeah.
Application.
Have a good night.
Nice meeting you.
Okay, so, um. First item on the agenda today, 65 Woodbridge Circle zoning variance upon application David Rucci, Landpart 2 in Rucci. Authorized agent for Brendan McBride owners for a variance of section 3.5.8.3 to allow a constructed pool to be located 31 feet from the backyard setback in lieu of 35 feet in the two acre zone at 65 Woodbridge Circle, map 27, block 25, lot F73.
You can see your.
Thanks.
So who's regular?
So either Kristy or Brittany.
We're both alternates.
Who's seated? Did you, did both, you get to visit the property? No?
Said she did.
Okay, so why don't you sit for this one then? Thank you.
Yeah. Did we receive the mailing receipts?
Yeah.
What was the hardest part? It's stressful too.
I know, this just happened in the other day. I got it red like six times in a row. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. David Rucci, David Rucci, they're this evening representing Brendan McBride. And, uh, their property at 65 Woodbridge Circle. So here's a picture of the property just from the front of the street. You'll notice that the building in and of itself, the property is kind of sitting far back. It's really far back from the curvature on Woodward Circle. So it kind of creates this huge front yard and not so much of a backyard. Here's kind of as you come into the driveway. Uh, you'll see this is the edge of the garage. And then this is looking back from the front of the house to the actual street itself. You see there's sort of this 180 or so feet to the corner of the curvature of Woodward Circle. Here's as you come through the back and you're seeing this pool that's the subject of the application this evening. Uh, this lot was initially part of, um, subdivision. You'll see it's lot number 10 on the, on the sheet in front of you. And you'll see how this stone wall kind of meanders along this back property line. And the reason I bring that up, that was one of the issues that we ran into this particular piece of property. Here's a picture of the pool itself. It's about 31 feet away from, like 31 feet in lieu of 35 feet. You see this corner of about 21 square feet has actually been built over the setback line. So town planner's done a good job of going through sort of what's happened in the past on this particular piece of property. Unfortunately, what happened was that a pool contractor was hired with other work that was being done on the property. Then McBride's basically said, this is where we want to place our pool. We want to put it somewhere in the back of, of the property. Uh, somewhere close to the back of our, where we can come out. We can see everything from the pool. It's not going to be to the side or anywhere like that. Can't obviously be in the front, um, or it's difficult to put it in the front yard without going as well to get a special permit. Nobody really wants to have their pool sitting in the front yard. So they found this location in the back of the piece of the property. Um, it's your standard late 20 by 42 foot pool. And when they installed it, they didn't think much about it. There was an issue with the septic, which you can see over here. Uh, the pool was actually built too close to the septic and it turned out that the contractor who built the pool had done so without a permit. So there was no permit for this pool when it was constructed at the time that it was constructed unbeknownst to our clients. The pool permit had not been actually sought or received. It turns out when they were looking at the septic area itself, the town was like, well, we need survey, we need to see where everything is. This is the first time that the survey actually disclosed that this pool was over the line and that became a separate issue for the client who had a septic.
David, so chronologically, they built the pool and then they built a new septic, you're saying?
They did have to eventually end up moving their septic, yes.
But how this come, how this issue come to light then?
Uh, the issue in a, the pool itself came to light because the septic, they built it too close to the septic.
But how the septic come to light?
It came to light because there was, um, a, their fuel tank contractor submitted a permit for a fuel tank for a pool heater and, um, the health department staff flagged that it looks like this. When you submit for like a, a tank like that, you just, you draw a plan, like it doesn't have to be formal and the health department admin um, flagged that the drawing seemed too close to the septic system. So they sent out an inspector and they found the pool.
So the town realized that there was an issue at that point. That's how it all came about.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so.
David, I mean, this is kind of surprising to me. Someone build a pool without checking to see if the contractor pulled a permit. I mean, I understand like putting new windows on your house or roof or something. Like sometimes it's great, like what needs a permit, what doesn't, but.
Right, I'll let Mr. Frank, yeah, so there's two, two pieces here. One, we did two construction projects at the same time. One from lateral development, which was an extension and renovation of the house. All of those permits, as far as we're aware, were filed. They were done on, on time. It was built within code. We were told at the same time by the contractor who's building the pool that they had also done the same. And we took him on the face that he was doing that. We weren't told that anything was uh, any different. I asked multiple times and he reaffirmed that we are okay with the town. That clearly wasn't the case. It was a lie on multiple occasions, but other than me like physically turning up at the town and saying, has this person who we just paid to contract on this job filed a permit? When again, we had built the pool, we had inspectors on site, like all of this was happening at the same time. Like this wasn't, there wasn't like a three year gap. All of the, all of the contracting, all of the work was happening at exactly the same time.
So when they were coming to inspect the building?
Yeah.
Instruction, they didn't notice a pool was being put in too?
So I, I reviewed the, um, timeline on that this morning and so in our, um, system, all of the inspections for the addition began in summer of 2022 and like June, uh, July, August. And we discovered the pool in May of 2022, so everyone was already aware that the pool existed without a permit by the time the inspection started.
And when was the initial, um, construction project submitted, the plan for a permit there?
For the.
The extension, yeah.
So it was issued in January of 2022. So it's probably submitted in November or December.
I mean, that's a surprising aspect.
What was that date again? What were you, you question just?
So I'm, typically we've seen people who have this mindset of, we're going to do the extension and pool near concurrent in time. And they will submit a plan that shows everything for one approval.
Yeah.
And so if you already knew you were doing the extension plan, did you at that time already know you're doing the pool and why wasn't the people who did your, like, why wasn't there one plan submitted?
So just to clarify, you do need separate permits for the structures.
No, no, I know separate permits, but usually, I mean, we've seen it where it's drawn in.
Yeah.
You know, on one plan just to save costs, right?
I mean, that's a good.
We use some, does it all. Multiple recommendations. We use Jim Scatino as our architect. We use Steven Metzer as our builder. And we'd used Signature Pools, all of who have done work in the town. At no point in any of this did anybody suggest to us that it would be in your interest to file everything together. Like, I could show you the plans for the house and it chose a pool. Like, there's a pool there. Like, when the survey work was done and submitted, I don't know what, like, again, I'm not an expert. I pay people to do this work and we contract them. And we believe that they're competent in what they do. And two of the three were competent in what they do and a third was not. This was also, you know, started, finished in the middle of, uh, in the middle of COVID. I don't know how easy or otherwise it was to get into the town to do what he needed to do. The reality is he didn't do it. But he told us that he did on multiple occasions through engineering, through survey work, through every other component piece. And it was only until, and again, unbeknownst to us, the as-built survey was submitted to the town. I'd never seen it. So clearly, like if I'd seen it, we would have addressed it proactively with the town. I get a call from Sarah that says, you're in violation of the setback on the pool. I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. Like, I hadn't seen this as-built plan. Moody and O'Brien submitted it on our behalf without our approval. And again, I don't have any issue with the sequence of events, like the pool is out of compliance. That's an issue that we're trying to address. But throughout, and again, like I have like 12, 20 pages of text messages between me and the contractor where at least 25 times I have asked him, send me the permits, show me what you've done. And I get a response saying, it's done, it's with the town. And this was in the middle of the summer of 21 and, and true at the start of 22.
I mean. I guess I have some issues with the whole timeline because it seems like. I mean, look, Luke and I are lawyers, so I think maybe if I had gotten no response, I'm going to just contact the town myself and ask, why is there an issue here? You know, my contractor says it's in.
Well, again, there was no issue flagged. I'm like, I had been on top.
But it sounds like around that time, sorry to interrupt, but I wasn't finished, um, that it might have been flagged around that time by the town, if, if you're saying it was around June 2021.
My understanding is it was constructed in summer of 2021, the pool?
Well, it was, it was started when it was pinned in August of, of 2021. It wasn't dug, it was framed and pinned in August. It wasn't dug until December and then it wasn't plastered until May. Again, the only piece on the timeline that I'm trying to establish is that the point at which the town had notified to us throughout that prior period before the town had told us about a permitting issue. I had requested from the contractor multiple times, prove that he had filed the.
Who was the, the last pool we had? What company was that?
Swim Pools.
I mean.
This was flagged by the health department though in May 2021.
2022.
22, okay, I'm sorry, I was somehow on my mind. In, okay.
In the past, when you've had issues.
Contractor and we're like, listen, we're showing, this is showing that there's an issue with this, with the setback. And he's like, no, no, there's no issue with the setback. I measured it ourselves. I'm like, but Moody and O'Brien is saying that there's an issue with the setback. It's showing that we're three feet short. He's like, no, 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 they're measuring wrong. They're measuring to the stone wall and our client owns the stone wall. I was like, oh, okay, great. So if that was the case, we would, if we had owned the actual stone wall, we wouldn't be needing a variance. But then, when Brian's like, no, you measure to the center of the stone wall. And so there, we're going through these months where the contractor's telling us that, no, 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 it's, I've measured to it, it's fine. And we're, and you know, don't worry about it. And then we get RKW. I call RKW because they had done actually the house behind, um, the McBride's house, the Slim's house. And they're like, no, 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 Leo Brian's right. Everything's to the center of the wall. So that's when we really knew that, you know, the contractor kept telling us that I've measured it, they're wrong. They've gone out there and we were trying, we were telling Sarah the same thing, like, listen, we think that there's a problem with the, with the stone wall, like where they're measuring to. You know, sometimes you never know. It's sometimes a property line is to the front of the stone wall. Sometimes you own the stone wall, sometimes it's to the center of the stone wall. This one is to the center of the stone wall. So that actually created this longer timeline. We were trying to get that information done. And then the second piece that I wanted to bring up is that we then went to the neighbor in the rear, the Slims, and we were like, listen, can we just do a property line exchange with you guys? I mean, we need like three feet. This wall already meanders kind of along the line. It's not like a straight line. And at first they were sort of receptive to it. And they were like, yeah, we think we're going to do it. We told Sarah, listen, I think we got this thing straightened out. You know, thanks for your patience. And they were great. Like, they were patient with us. They were trying, they knew it was an issue. And we had an issue. And they also knew that the contractor that we were dealing with had other issues in town and this was not something that was specific to us or to our client. So they were great trying to work with us. And then all of a sudden, like at the last minute, the neighbor in the back was like, yeah, I'm not going to do a property line and attorneys advise me that it's not a good idea if I have to sell and the line's not exactly the same. And I don't really understand that at all. I do lots of property lines with exchanges in my practice and the only thing that's a hassle is trying to get the banks to sign off on them, but that happens. So we were really surprised at that. So that actually created an additional, I don't know, three months probably before we got that particular answer done. And then we had, and the only reason I'm giving this timeline is because it's a long time between 2021 and where we are today. And I want to make sure that you guys understand, it's not like we were doing nothing about it. And then the last part of it, um, was that we really wanted to get the violation that we had for the septic. We had a violation on the septic. We had a violation on the drainage policy because of where they put the pool and we had to move the septic and we had to put a new drainage policy in. So we waited to get all those things done prior to coming here because we didn't want to be sitting here with not only a violation of, you know, a setback issue, but also these two other items. And, and that was kind of a miscommunication between myself and, and town staff because I thought actually that would be the best thing to do is to come in here without anything else going on. But, um, you know, I think they were a little disappointed that we didn't act right away when our property line exchange kind of fell through.
So in the past, we've had issues with pools?
Yeah.
We've had the pool contractor show up and explain to us what happened about it.
He's, listen, there's, well, I think to be very clear, like there's unlikely litigation between me and him. I would prefer him not to be in the room. I, I think it's pretty clear that he was in flagging violation of one, the contract he signed with me. And then two, what his, what his obligations were to you, the town. So I, I don't know him standing here and saying, I'm sorry, I made him stay. I got, I'm, I'm just not.
And is this the pool coping or the pool structure? I mean, the coping is part of the structures.
It's from the inside edge out. So it's from the water out. It's the coping, the coping's over.
That's what bumped it from being.
I think there is also.
31.
A slight edge of.
That's what I'm asking, is the water over or just the coping?
It's both.
It's right, it's about 21 square feet. I mean, I'm trying to highlight it here on the screen. Um, and I'm sorry, the, something happened with the copies. It's very hard to see on the copy that gave you this, these upper things, but it's about 21 square feet. It's a little bit of water on the side here.
So it's not like an issue we've seen in the past where some contractors aren't aware that a new canyon like coping counts as the pool.
No, not like the one that we had on that. No, that was.
It sounds like the error was partly with the wall.
It was the whole thing.
Measuring.
Yeah, for him measuring the wall.
Also like, the only other in my mind to try to resolve is obviously if it had come before us to seek a variance in that process before it constructed. You know, a pool isn't a necessary use of your land typically. You know, it's one that is fairly customary in this town, but we probably would have advised you if that was the intended placement, that a smaller pool would fit without a variance. And so that is one thing I'm struggling with. Um, when there is, there would have been space for a smaller pool, it's hard to find a hardship.
Or you could move the pool or, I mean, it's, it's.
There's no alternative to moving the pool. The advice that we've given is that it has to be demolished.
No, I'm saying when it was originally built.
Yes, for sure.
It could have been in a slightly different location. A little different angle, it could have.
If.
I mean, so we, I mean, as your attorney has said, I'm sure he's advised you are current of variance, we have to find a hardship that runs with the land.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, the, the hardship that we're presenting today is actually the location of this house and what sits on the property since it's back up into, against this corner. And there's no doubt in the two things that you just said, that yes, a pool could have been smaller and a pool could have been set back literally a foot and it wouldn't have made a darn difference to this outcome. Um, and yes, if we were going for a variance ahead of time, we probably would have discussed this and said, no, let's just forget about going for the variance, even though your house does sit in this particular location. Um, and we'll go, you know, and just build it smaller, what happened. We're not in that, we're not in that position right now.
Have you spoken with engineers about the, or other pool companies about the possibility of shortening the pool?
Yeah, it's not possible.
So they can't like build a wall and.
No, because apparently the rebar that sits within the concrete, uh, wall, if you take it apart, you can't guarantee the, uh, the structure. So the advice that we've been given is you have to demolish it and then you would have to rebuild it at a cost of half of any. So this area here, um, you know, looking for other pool locations, had we come in here ahead of time, we, yes, while we could have made it potentially a little bit smaller, we wouldn't have wanted to put it to the side of the property because like I said, this looks right out onto Woodward Circle. So you would essentially be looking directly at the pool. Even though it's not technically in the front yard, just the way the curvature of this road is, everything sees right into this area right here. I can just show you a couple of pictures for those of you who were not, did not get out to the property. But so here's sort of where the pool is now, looking out into Woodward Circle. Wouldn't have wanted to move it into this area because like I said, it's looking onto the street right here. It would have encroached somewhere the septic would have had to be moved to. And well, that's the other thing, the septic did end up having to be moved and it ended up going into that particular spot.
You could have rotated the pool.
Listen, yes, there's other, there were other options to do the rotation. I mean, we can't with a straight face argue here that, you know, there wasn't a potential other location for this pool. All we can do is talk about the hardship that we do have today based on what's been already built.
We have two steps, reasonable necessary use.
Yeah.
And a hardship. Reasonable necessary use on a pool.
We've granted a variance for a pool before, so I don't know if you want to.
Uh, that's not presidential, that's like unique. I mean, that's a hard argument to make. You know, the, how, how, why, why do you, why do you need a pool to reasonably, reasonable use of your house?
Well, I mean, pools, tennis courts, paddle courts, I mean, these are not things that are unfamiliar with the compound in New Canaan. And that is what New Canaan really has become, is a place where people have their compounds. They have their pools and they have their paddle courts. And, you know, I think you can make the argument that maybe not necessary in the sense that we would use that word literally, but it has become something that has created property values for many people here in New Canaan. And it's allowed people to use their property the way they want to use their property. I mean, purely, uh, you know, uh, this is my property and I want to be able to use it.
Um, well, I mean, people can do that, but they can't pull, you know, anything on the property they want.
No, the only, the only thing that I would say is this is reasonable in this particular cases. And not getting back to whether it could be a foot shorter or whether it could be rotated a certain place, but having the pool in this particular spot is a smart place to have it based on the fact that it's very close to the back of the house. You can see through the kitchen windows, you know, you can watch things of this particular pool. So it can become really a part of the house and the use of the house itself. And I think that is important, not only from a safety perspective, but also from the use of the property. I mean, most people, like I said, don't want to put their pools so far away. Some do, but most of them want to be closer to the house so they can utilize that pool and that space. Um, here's a picture of the pool itself. Here's this corner that we're talking about. Um, it's ten, twelve feet over. This is the property line of the Slims. Uh, it's, it's dense. You can see the stone wall is not really, it's kind of falling apart a little bit here. Um. Here's a picture of looking back once again at that property line where we're requesting, which is this 21 square foot of this corner that I'm pointing to on, with the cursor right now. And this is actually what the, what the stone wall looks like now. Um, it's approximately hundred square feet, I'm sorry, 100 feet from the actual back of the residence, back of the patio of Slim's property. hundred square feet, I'm sorry, a hundred feet from the actual back of the residence, back of the patio of Schlemm's property. And as I said, we have gone to the, the neighbors, this is the, the most um, the neighbor who has uh the closest to it and the one that we initially requested property line exchange with. And um, just says, you know, we're writing express bold support for their request. Tried to come to us to explain this unfortunate situation they've been put in by their contractor and we feel the only reasonable remedy at this point is for them to um will to grant a variance. It's a small coverage distance and we have no objection to the current location and generally hope that we are granted a variance. Um, another neighbor also in support. Um, we have three neighbors that uh aren't supportive of it.
David, could the shed that's I guess it's probably grandfathered in, but it's in the setback area, could that be potentially moved so that it's no longer
Yes.
Out of compliance?
Yes, we can move that shed if that
David, yeah, I mean.
Would do some violation on the property.
So the um unusual hardship, you know, you have to test the confiscation test, which we almost never see. I think I've seen that once or twice, where there's no use of the property at all if they don't get the variance. And the second is the exceptional difficulty test where you can't reasonably use your property if, you know, you don't agree, you're in the variance. That usually involves something unique to the property, the shape, the topography, ledge, something like that. That runs with the land. I mean, I guess in the other thing, I guess we've done to create some room in the past is if they're gonna make it more, not more conforming. That's obviously some of the ways in favor of granting the variance. And I think that's what Jessica's hinting on here. I think we did that with another application where it was after the fact.
And to be clear, that shed was there when we purchased the property in twenty seventeen, but it helps with
No, it's just the intent of zoning is that over time, property become more compliant, not less compliant. Knows if you're doing something that would make it more compliant, I mean that. That, that, that's, that supports, helps support an application.
Yeah, that would certainly, certainly be more than willing to uh, make property more conform by removing the shed or at least bringing it within the setbacks themselves. Um, and you know, uh, with, with the pool, if it's at the pool thirty-one feet away, not a trade off per se, but something that makes it more conformant based the location of the corner of that pool.
It could also be important that, I mean, you've represented several times that um, it was essentially a mistake that the, that um, the permit wasn't filed, uh, and you asked for it. But there's nothing, there's no evidence that actually shows that you were asking the question and they were responding. Yeah, I think it would be useful if we're gonna consider um, granting the variance to have that as kind of the record.
Sure.
So that if it's referred to later, it's absolutely clear that you did take those steps and try to make sure that
I have, I have an individual timeline of every single time I asked him, plus every text message that we have ever exchanged.
But you never went to the town, you just kept going to the contractor.
No, so if you, if you say, again, just to reiterate that same point, so if you separate the two timelines from when the town notified me.
Right.
It, all I'm trying to suggest is that is not the point at which I started asking about a permit. It's the time preceding that, I had asked multiple times about a permanent, about engineering works and about zoning, and I was told on multiple occasions, it's done, it's in hand. Now, there's an
I understand that, I'm saying, but before that, you didn't go to the town.
I, I, I had moved out from the city, I was born in Ireland, I don't necessarily understand all of the rules, I accept that I have an obligation to understand them. I paid a contractor a lot of money, and at the same time, I had two contractors plus an architect. And I asked him the question that I thought was reasonable and he gave me an answer that I thought was supportive. Now, the last step was me marching down to the town and verifying the answer, trust would verify it, of course, I didn't do that. But at no point did my architect say, you should double check this, who we also paid for servicing around all of the contractual work. Or the uh, the building contractor who did the renovations and construction on the house, to suggest in a good faith basis, you shouldn't just accept that answer, it essentially had to be tripped up by the town, which is incredibly unfortunate and obviously something that I would wish that I had avoided by walking down to the town. I paid this guy a lot of money to, and multiple other contractors to be experts to do that for me, and they told me that they did.
So it was the architect and the contractor who were looking at building the pool and brought in?
No, the architect and the contractor were solely just for the house. We contracted the pool separate, which was a mistake. Hundred percent a mistake, but all recommended each other.
I, I don't think for purposes of whether or not we can grant or not grant a variance whose fault this is
Agreed.
Matters. I don't think your texts matter, I think I'd rather not have them being in the record. I mean, if you're gonna be in a lawsuit with them, what you, you do with, and that is up to your attorney and him. But I don't see how that would, I mean, our, our grounds for granting a variance has to be something related to the property. Regardless of whether your situation is sympathetic or not. Um, while we try to be sympathetic towards people in town, because we live in the town, we're a collegial board, you know, we all have kids, things like that. Fault and is, is not something that I, I think is particularly relevant in our analysis. I think the best point is Jessica's point she had about making it more compliant.
There might also, it looks to me, based on, there's a slight gradation around your patio that was constructed based on how the stairs had to be built in, or kind of low it down. And it would seem to me that perhaps potentially, yeah, that's the picture I've been looking at as well. That the placement of the pool perhaps might have had to be placed at least that distance from the patio to be somewhere flat. I mean, it doesn't fully resolve
I think it's gonna be
The fact that there are dimensions that could have been shorter.
I mean, the lot is about as flat of a lot as I've ever seen. I mean, you're not, it's, you're gonna have a hard time
As far as them contracting separately, and I asked Brendan about that, I was worried about that earlier, he was like, you know, listen, this guy had built the pool for my, my boss, he built it with my friend, I mean, he'd built a lot of pools and he didn't think much about it, you know, he's like, and, and by the way, you know, this person, I was talking to my partner about this earlier, he's like, yeah, like I bought Bill, you know, Bill Michael, you know.
Well, like, like I'm saying, I don't think fault, let's, let's try to stay away from it here.
So I do want to actually talk this through for a second, because I think the only reason we're considering this is because there's, there's a problem here with the contractor. And I don't, I think that people will bring this up later as precedent, I know that they're not supposed to, but I think they will. And if we don't say why we're even considering this, then I think that's an issue. It's an after the fact request.
The only reason why I think we are considering if there's some mitigation with the shed, I mean, I think that is a good idea, that, that, that really is. And then you got the swing set and also, but you know, right, I would tell you.
In this room and they said there wasn't, the, the contractor had, you know, I don't know. I, I don't know what the scenario would be, but if the contractor wasn't at fault and they came in here and just asked for permission to have the pool, I think that we really probably wouldn't even entertain it, you know, the, if they just came in, they had never pulled the permit, they'd never even tried. Then I think that would be a different issue.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and obviously that's, you know, a part of this, and that's something that we wanted to explain is sort of, uh, uh, as a global matter, um. But in the end, you know, as this commission knows, and, and we appreciate that part of it, you know, in the end, yes, we do have to find something that's, that's a hardship on the property itself. And, and bringing all those things in, you know, you, you used to be able to actually, you used to be able to get variances when an architect made a mistake or a surveyor mistaken, and they don't allow that anymore. So that's actually been specifically ruled out as something. So, but nonetheless, it's, it is a part of, of our story.
Right.
Um, and you know, to Ms. Cardon's uh point and to Ms. Tashin's point, you know, yes, the, the grading is something that we could have looked at a little bit differently and maybe that's something that would have uh, assisted, assisted in the pool getting a variance today. And also, yes, if we remove that shed, the board in the past has looked favorably on the property becoming more conforming. And that's certainly something that um, the developers are willing to do. So I think I would just leave it at that as far as from, from a hardship perspective. Um, and then the reasonable use of the property is, as I kind of said earlier, with the pool and its location, you know, this is really is a good location for this particular pool, albeit three feet too far over on one particular place, but in general, it's, it, it is a good location for it. So um, you know, we think that is reasonable for that to be in that particular situation.
Appreciate that. Um, I think in the past, when we've looked at these after the fact, we've always looked at it. And I think that's what you've, kind of what you're hinting at is, we've always looked at it as if you came in on day one, would we grant it? I mean, I, I think from a standpoint of encouraging compliance, you know, we have to look at it, you know, we can't reward someone for coming in after the fact. You know, it has to be, would we have granted this, like they're saying on day one, like is there a condition that allows us to grant under the law? And would we have granted it if, if all these negative things didn't happen?
Well, I'm not suggesting we, we don't consider that as well. I'm suggesting the only reason we're looking at it to begin with is because it's, there's a mistake. And then on top of that, there's still has, you still have to comply with um, the requirements. I look at this one as another one, though, even if things had been with a different contractor. And because it is just the corner and a few feet over, right, so they're looking for four feet variance. It's one of those things where if the contractor you did hire under same type of circumstances, different set of facts, different um contractor always thought it was that distance to the full bit of stone wall. Even if you thought this was being placed completely perfectly, you might have had an after the fact needs for a variance. Um, yeah, it's tight. So it, it's one of those things where I could see a scenario where someone had it contracted didn't actually think they needed to come to the board for a variance because they thought based on the measurements it'd be fine, and they'd be in that same situation that we just reviewed where there was a concern where they thought in one town they didn't need to measure and include the coping, and then this one, you know, in our town they do, so.
I think in that circumstance, though, you would have had the building permit application ahead of time with the plans and things, and they would have caught it.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible, but I think they had that same situation, that one, where because they had the coping and I don't know if the building plans would have noticed with the stone wall, if the measurements were inexact or not. I mean, in that situation, they probably would have recommended just shorten it by a couple of feet and unfortunately, we can't make that recommendation right now, so.
Is this shed, the one, the gray picture, the same one on the plan, or is it two sheds?
No, it's just one.
I mean, it, it's it's a small change from, from the standpoint of making things more compliant with zoning over time, getting rid of a huge shed, that's not very nice looking.
Or just moving it elsewhere on your property that's in the setback and
I mean.
If they, if they could do that, I mean, that probably is a somewhat portable structure.
I don't know.
Well, at this point
It'd probably be torn down, yeah, it's
Well, and it is Rebuild it.
I got one that
Makes sense to put it. And it is completely outside of that. So we're bringing it in to compliance. Which would be, you know, a major change.
I think on the plan, yeah, for a go forward basis, that would be a substantial
Because here's your setback line.
Nonconformity that would help.
If this came to me ahead of time and said, we need three feet on our pool or whatever.
We would say that.
And, and they say, and they say, we will get rid of this enormous shed that's in the setback, like five feet from the property line?
We would
I mean, we've done that before, we would definitely like say like, because none of the neighbors are gonna notice it's three feet there. But they're gonna, you know, it's a flat pool, it's not elevated, it's not, but they will notice the, the shed being gone. I mean, it's screened along the wall pretty well, too, even in the middle of the winter. But at the end of of the day, I mean, I think on day one, they would have had a I mean, an incredible position.
Yeah, this is, this is your screening for the most part.
So then the next question is, is there gonna be other things done on the property related to the pool, like a
The only thing is
Pool house or uh, or uh, what do you call it? Cabana, cabana?
What, how would you structure a fence around it?
Where's the fence? The fence is going uh, all the way across the front of the property. Um, from the right hand side to the left hand side, and it's, it's on property, I just obviously didn't want to spend the money to install this and then have to remove it.
Can you show us where the fence is gonna be on the plan?
Is that where you have all the trees marked with orange tags?
They're, they're the trees, they're just, they're dead.
Oh, okay, but there's no fencing that's going there.
So it will go essentially all the way across here. And then all the way across here.
Yeah, but doesn't the fencing have to go around the pool?
Uh, our understanding was that because there's an auto cover on the pool, that the auto cover uh now supports.
That's true, that was updated in the building code, um.
Yeah.
Have you confirmed with the building department since, you know, this was constructed in twenty twenty one, because that was a code update in twenty fifteen? So I don't know if your pool is, like, I, you would just have to reconfirm that, because I, I'm not sure, given the timeline.
Okay, well, it, it was, it was part of the conversation we had, which is why we drew, drew up the plans on the fence that, that we because again, there is an auto cover underneath that temporary, the winterized cover that's there.
And what type of um, fence is this?
Uh, it's a six to eight feet aluminum metal fence.
Like bars you can see through or solider?
By the picture, that's helpful.
Iron looking fence?
Yes. And it's, it's all on The eight boxes that are
We do have, we do have height requirements with fencing, so it's just eight feet is only allowed when you're not in the setback, so
Or if you're beyond the setback.
Yeah.
You can put eight feet.
Just want to make sure whatever fence
Even along the front?
Yes.
Only allowed four feet around the
Yeah, I thought along the front, like four feet.
Not if you're beyond the setback.
Yeah.
So if the setbacks, uh, this is the uh it, what is this, forty-five feet, so forty-eight by sixty. So sixty wide by forty-eight tall.
The four feet on it.
Yeah, so, but like, if you were within forty-five feet of this front yard right here, you could actually start an eight foot fence beyond it. If you chose to. And but yes, you're right, deer fencing you can do differently than that, but you could actually start the fence that high.
Some really good points on the board, isn't he?
That's the actual thing.
Okay, yeah.
Does anyone have questions?
No, I, I mean, I think the shed is where we're hanging this.
I think again, just to reiterate the same point, like we did two projects at the same time, the second one far more significant than the first. Everything we did on the second was in code, built with the tenant. I, I, I wish I, I had the same trust I placed in one contractor was equal with the trust I played, I placed in the other, but it's just tough. So I, I don't want this to suggest that we flavorfully, like, try and skirt the rules. Because we didn't, like, our track record is, is in, in other areas at exactly the same time, I think is good.
So off the northwesterly end of the pool.
I'm sorry?
I mean, would you, I, would you be comfortable adding it? I mean, obviously, we're not gonna be able to give you liberty on something you didn't do, but I mean, I, going forward in the future, anything constructed off the northwesterly end of the pool is going to be problematic.
Yeah, I'm fine to, and we talked about this before, understanding that the line gets reset, I'm fine to put a letter on file, have it affidavit by um, uh, by David. Um, and then ensure that that's transferred with any sale of the property, and I'll, I'd assume the risk that that's gonna cost me money if the person who's buying the property doesn't want to accept that.
Well, could we, I, I don't know if we even need that, does, does anyone on the board think would, would want that or?
No, I, I
I think, I think we're all fine with that.
Okay, I, again, I'm more than happy to do that.
Jessica? No. Any other conditions people think are relevant? David, I
Yeah, does the town do anything with this pool contractor, they serve him a notice, so he better not do this again?
So we've looked into it, because uh, like, said in my memo, we've had many issues with this contractor, uh, our attorneys have advised that there isn't any like, we can't stop them from working in this town. We've, um, as I said in my memo, we had a meeting with them about a year ago and it has been better since that meeting, um.
Okay, yeah, no, I agree with that.
It's gotten better.
Okay.
No, I don't have any learn, and, you know, we thank the board obviously for the way they went with this application and the questions they'd asked and the fact that they put that thought into account by everything that's, that's approved here.
Is there anyone on, on virtually?
No.
Sure.
On virtual. Alright, anyone here for or against? No one here, no one virtual? So we'll move into executive session, so only the members, I mean, business session, so only the members seated. So we'll move into executive session, so only the members, I mean, business session. So only the members seated. Can vote. Um, I give you your time to consider it.
Can you stop hearing the screen?
Let me try closing.
No, don't.
Rich character, so I would recommend we. Grant the variance, um, provided that. The shed is demolished or at least moved within the setback.
When you do make a motion officially, I would recommend that you all have a discussion about how this doesn't set. Any sort of precedent for, you know, illegal work done by contractors, just because. This, this contractor is a defender that we have had many issues with.
I come back to the point that on all these applications. We have to look at them. As if on day one, we would have granted it. I mean, cause otherwise encourages bad behavior.
I do think you have to note, but I mean, it's bad behavior. Otherwise, I, I think, you know, we run into an issue where people think we're just gonna turn our heads and.
And the background is helpful for that point of view, so it's not like some, not like the homeowner was trying to.
Right.
No, I would like skirt the law, so it is helpful having the background there.
Right, it's the contractor, you know, that has bad behavior that would.
I mean, if we were to. Have seen this come before us, before constructed, I think I would have considered saying something like. That I would move to grant the variance on the condition that the nonconforming shed. Is removed or at least moved to another location on the property where it's not in the setbacks. And that due to the location of the house on the lot. And the open nature of the lot where there is minimal screening, minimal trees. That there is challenges of placing the pool. In a different location on the property, because there would be no other really natural screening or other than the house. And that's how I would probably phrase it at the time, if we're looking at it before constructed.
I think at the time. Probably you'd have with that application, why don't you make it, you know, a foot and a half shorter? I mean, I know we're trying to do it here, so I come back to the point that Jessica had about making a lot more conforming. I, I believe that's. If there wasn't something on this lot to make them all conforming, I'd, I'd say tear it up.
Issue, if it wasn't for the shed, I wouldn't know what did, you know.
Yeah, me too.
Because let them worry about it with the contractor.
Yeah, it's my view as well. I mean, that's between the two of them.
I mean, rotating the pool seems not to quote either as an option for this all happen.
Yeah, so I think the only. Way they would get it is if they're making it more conforming. And we've used that as grounds before. I mean, when we're on something on the line like this, cause an objective of zoning is to make everything more conforming over time.
And, and you look at the materiality of the nonconforming, you know, this was ten feet. The bigger issue than it being.
That's what I'm saying, coming back to two is like the sheds are very noticeable to neighbors. This pool is completely flushed to the ground without a deck or anything around it. So a neighbor is not gonna notice it's a foot and a half this way or that way versus this gigantic gray shed right next to the line.
Well, and there's also the stone wall. Also blocking some with degree of visibility for it too.
It's pretty, there's like some sort of evergreen trees in the middle there.
Yeah, no, it's.
It's pretty, um, even in the winter, it's screened very heavily.
Yeah, so that, that screening is on, I think, the other properties. So if the screening is integral to your approval, they want a condition that should. That screening go away, that'll have to be replaced on their property, it would be something to consider.
I don't know how.
Not if you take down the shed completely.
No, the screening. I always have that issue with adding.
Oh, yeah.
It for screen, I feel like it sets future homeowners up for.
The planning is only official loves to add screening conditions.
I mean, I, I, it, it is important though, like. That. This is screened between the two properties. Um, cause there is so much happening so close to the line there with all the. I mean, they don't have everything on the plane. If you can see they have this big pipe thing, there's, there's a lock right against that line. Like if there wasn't screening, it would be.
Even though it's not on their property, like maintaining the existing level of screening.
And we can't maintain something on the.
Well, I mean, it would just be if the neighbors cut it down, it would be on.
Yeah.
The other.
But you're not gonna replant forty foot high trees.
No, but.
Grow, you know, that's. What happened, because we, we have had this before.
It's a comparable level of screening.
No, I'm saying comparable would be like, all asking a lot like.
Sufficient.
To this before, um, there was actually a case somewhat recently where there was a condition from like two thousand and ten where um. Neighbor had cut down trees that were supposed to be left in perpetuity. And I mean, you just, you replace it with a similar species and it's not gonna be the same height. Maybe for ten years, but you, you replace it and.
But isn't that really the job, the job of planning and zoning and wetlands and.
No, cause they wouldn't go get a permit to cut these trees and they're not gonna come back again to do the permit hopefully, like it's.
I mean, that's not a requirement, it was just something to consider.
Right, now I think, I think adding a screening element should the existing screening go away is.
I wouldn't object to it, I mean.
I just don't know how, I, I think it makes sense in principle to do that, cause like, like you, that's an important thing to me. I just don't know how we would say like. What it's supposed to be like, I, I don't wanna make it so vague that it's impossible down the road for someone to know. Know what we were trying to say in our decision. And I don't wanna put a burden on someone where they gotta spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars arguably. Cause they have a neighbor matted on and now the trees are cut down.
Maybe something like a natural growth. Screen of sufficient height.
At least eye height.
Yeah.
So we.
Six foot high.
Yeah, I mean, you could. You could say a, a, a visual buffer of the pool that was of at least six meter height was.
Yeah.
Always maintained.
Other than a fence like a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's more.
Yeah.
Realistic landscape screening.
Yeah, landscape screen.
That's six feet, yeah.
Landscape screening of, of six feet high, creating a visual, a visual buffer.
Yeah, that would be, that's not gonna be so likely to jeopardize a future home owner.
No.
I think the key is also to consider, you know, financial hardships shouldn't be considered. And if someone were to purchase this house, they are. Purchasing a home with, you know, a variance that was granted.
Put in the six foot high roll bushes along that property line.
It's.
It's gonna be a couple thousand dollars, it's gonna be five thousand dollars, it's not a huge, in a million plus house, it's not. Owners.
Are we in agreement that we're looking to have something put in there also regarding?
The shed.
The, the, well, the shed obviously, right? But the errors that brought this forward, I mean, like Christie had mentioned. That, you know, this really. Is neglect, negligence on the part of the contractor?
I don't think that necessarily supports like the grounds for our decision. I think the point is that.
No, I'm not saying it's grounds for a decision. I'm saying it's just something putting in the file that supports like, okay, this came to us. Okay, where, you know what, there's negligence here.
Should we?
Is it already part of the record at this point though?
That's what I'm wondering, maybe in the minutes or?
I just recommend that when you do make an official motion that you clarify why this case is.
Unique, yeah.
Other cases, just because, you know, in the future, if there is, you know, a contractor with ill will that doesn't wanna follow the rules and they. See this case, why, what incentive do they have to follow the rules versus not?
Right.
That's my concern.
I, I think in this case, what's unique that is that it's extremely well screened from neighboring properties. And it's ground level with no patio around it. And that they have a very large shed. That they're making, removing to make it more compliant. And then I think we just say like, all the applications is non precedental. And um, while we can't consider it as grounds for the decision, we of course, you know, heard the. Property owner's expression regarding, you know, he was not coming out here to um. He, he didn't go out there intending to avoid the law, this was accidental. I don't know what else we can do to, we've had this happen a handful of times, we had where the house is a little too tall or, I mean, every time it comes up, we always think like. After the fact, what do we do? I only remember one time where we. Told them to pull something out, it's cause they put the pool filter right next to like the neighbor's window. You know, and it's, it's just driving the neighbor nuts listening to, you know, it had like a real effect on someone, so he said, no, pull up your patio and move them.
And I don't think this is accidental. I, I think that, you know, I'm, I, I feel differently, you know, I'm not saying that it was the homeowner, but I think you've got. A contractor here that doesn't care and he's getting away with it.
Yeah, well, I think.
You know, I think this is signature pool, if I'm not mistaken, and I see them all over town.
Well, I think the recourse there is that there's obviously gonna be some sort of lawsuit between the property owner and him.
He's, once he gets his approval, well, you know, careful what I say here, it's speculation, but what damages does he?
He's still expended money on hiring David and other people, like he has damages already.
Move a septic system? He had to move the septic system, had to redo the drainage.
Yeah.
I mean, he has significant.
And this was all, but this was all at the, because of the negligence of this. Pool company.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, 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 it's. Yeah, it's very costly for the homeowner.
And this is very different fact pattern than the one we saw where some towns count the coping and some don't. So it seems excusable to me. That, you know, if you're a contractor, you're doing work in eight towns and only one of the towns comes to coping in the size of the pool. And that happens being new Canadian, you could accidentally make that mistake. But that pool had permits and stuff, this is like. To build a whole pool with no permits is kind of, it's kind of amazing.
Yep.
I'm not kind of amazing, it's very amazing. It's like a reputable company. It's not like some guy standing on the corner.
Right.
I don't wanna know if I'm using reputable or not, but I'm saying it's a company that's, it's a real company. It's not like he hired his cousin to do it. But that. Again, is.
But that's in the back of my, mine too, this pool company. Started to do this in a lot of instances in multiple towns. They, like, in back of my mind, I start thinking, how many lawsuits might they be facing? Potentially or claims from homeowners who are going through this in multiple towns. And would there actually be financial resources to eventually pay for the classroom mitigation?
Yeah, I have no idea, I don't know.
You know, I don't know.
I have no idea, I don't know if licensing has anything.
Doubt insurance would cover.
There's costs, there's costs associated, no, I'm saying the pool company's insurance, the pool company's liability insurance.
Oh, I doubt it would cover, it's their error.
But insurance.
To not get that permit, wouldn't you think that if they didn't act in the ordinary expected way of.
I have no idea, I'm not an insurance attorney, I don't. I.
I have to deal with insurance a lot for my job and I would not get insurance to fence them up.
So the, I mean, but this cost one year is losing a shed.
Yeah.
He had to pay Joe Rucci, he, he's not very expensive, but that's.
No, yeah.
So, um.
Have you, have you been writing down some notes on?
So I have um, the notes for the conditions and um, like I don't need to specifically write anything down for. The precedent, it's more just I want it in the recording.
Well, no, I think we could put that in the decision too.
Yeah.
I mean, cause then someone actually sees in the decision if the pool does sink, someone doesn't necessarily pull all the meeting minutes of things. So I guess, if anyone else have anything else to say? Oh. No, okay. I can make a motion and then maybe we'll talk it through. And if someone wants to add to it, a change in them, it's kinda long and.
Do you want me to read the conditions I have?
Yes.
Agree on one, okay, so relocate the shed to a conforming location.
Or remove it.
I mean, we can add that in, but I think that's kind of.
Yeah, remove or relocate nonconforming shed.
Yeah.
And then um, a landscape screening at least six feet in height is maintained in perpetuity to screen the pool from the drink. From adjacent property.
I think we should be clear that we're not requiring and then put that in now, that would include.
Existing.
Existing, yeah. Cause I don't want it to be, cause you're not gonna imagine someone reading that thinking they need to put that in.
And we're only talking about the screening. Um, behind the wall.
Under one side.
Where's the plan? So we can.
That's on the north. Is that the north? Okay, I didn't specify to say to screen the pool from um, the north. Adjacent.
So that the pool and any pool decking.
They're not allowed.
Pool and pool coping is not visible from. The north. Northernly property.
Northern property.
Northernly property. And that's natural screening, not a stockade fence or something.
I said landscape screening.
Um, you may wanna say.
Natural, natural landscape.
Does anyone know if that's really north?
Yes, there's, there's an arrow on the plan, one of the plans in there, right here.
Yeah.
On this one, yeah.
Yeah.
I used to have a ruler I'd bring to these, which is really cool because it would like scale to the plants. But it doesn't work anymore, cause you don't have like full sized plants.
Yeah.
Like architects used to come with them, so I would, I bought one and.
So that's what you have so far, Sarah?
Yes, that's what.
Okay.
Naturals.
Wait, is, am I saying a natural?
I know, natural doesn't mean plants, natural to me. Do we say?
Landscape is a standard of planning, starting to say a landscape buffer.
Landscape.
I would say natural landscape screening.
Okay, that's.
Natural landscape screening, that's at least six feet high.
Yes.
To block the view of the pool. From the northerly property.
I would recommend saying screen, because in the future, if you say block and then.
Screen, okay, the screen.
Say that they can see the.
Okay, the screen. Okay, the screen. And that the shed be relocated either.
Removed or relocated.
Moved or relocated, so there's not any setbacks.
Yep.
And that the grounds for granting this. Would be, um, like they're making the property more conforming. And that this property is very unique in that, um. The location of the stone wall makes it appear this is further from the property line than in fact is. And the screening obscures it from property line.
And I think the house is already setback.
Yeah, and the house is set way back on the property. Did you write those down? This is gonna be a long motion.
So, I mean, it's recorded in our, our minute taker will.
Okay, so I would. Move to make a motion that we grant the variance on the grounds that they're going to. Remove the nonconforming shed or make it otherwise conforming by taking it outside the property setback. That, um, the property is unique with the house situated very far to the rear of the property. And the only location to screen the house from the front yard would be the location of the pool where it is now. That someone looking at the property would presume that this pool is. Further from the property line than it is because of the location of the stone wall. That this have, existing heavy screening between the neighbors properly in this pool, so the. Nonconforming nature of this pool is not visible. From any adjacent property. Um, I'd also note that, like any zoning board of appeals decision, this is a non precedental decision. And we look at each property uniquely to see whether or not it meets the requirements for variance. And we view this as if this was not an after the fact variance provided, um, we do understand and we always try to be sympathetic towards. Towards facts that are presented to us. And here, there are facts presented to us showing that. Um, this was not something that the property owner intended to bring upon himself. Anything else?
I would only add to that, there is, we're gonna impose the requirement. That the existing natural landscape screening. Um, should there be any alterations to it over time, that six feet high. Um, replacement. Uh, natural landscape screening be installed. Um. Of whatever variety of plants to maintain uh, that level of screening.
I'd amend my motion and add that to it.
On the north.
No.
On the north.
Right.
Um, do we wanna put a condition on that the fencing be the type of fencing he showed us across the front of the property? No?
I think it's already on the lot, so it seems.
Okay.
Pretty secure.
Anything else? Someone wanna second that?
Uh, Carden, second.
Passion in favor?
Would carry two in favor?
Carden in favor?
Del in favor.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
I think we thought he had to sit outside during it.
Maybe you're gonna take the tension.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have the minutes. So to approve the minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I, I asked him here for that meeting.
Okay.
So I can't.
Okay, which carry two, write the minutes and make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
We can just do all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay.
Looking at this, that has to have been the fastest ever meeting recorded on.
Yes, it was.
Seven minutes, seven sixteen.
What? Wait, does it say that? Included seven sixteen.
During that seven sixteen.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, last time, last meeting.
I made a motion for adjourned now. Okay, I moved to adjourn now. We have to all say we're in favor.